But I think the third thing which we really it gets underlined or under discussed in the big picture of things. We always want to be good at the rules, good at mechanics, but we never really talked about what it is to be a great crew person. In my opinion, it's the most important because anybody could be taught the rules or the mechanics and what they want called and what they don't want called. But you can't be taught how to be a good person. And I would think that most supervisors or people in charge of of hiring for their prospective conferences or associations want somebody that's a good person. All right, be the official that everybody wants to work with. Okay, that's that's paramount, right? You want to be that person that everybody wants the number one draft, right? And there's certain ways to go about that, and I think we'll go over a couple. What is a great crew person, right? What exemplifies what a great crew person is? Is it being a yes person? In this aspect, I don't think so. We don't need sheeple. All right, come to the conference conversation with your own take, okay? You don't want to, or at least I don't want to work with a bunch of people that are just going to agree with me. I want people to challenge me. I want people to have their own take. Just like I would, you know, I don't expect to go tell somebody, hey, we're going to mark off 18 yard or let's say a 13 yard holding foul, right? If if I come up and tell you, hey, we're going to mark that off 13 yards, I would expect somebody to say, hold up. You know, that's only a 10 yard foul, right? Buying drinks, right? Especially at the local watering hole, trying to chummy up to people thinking that that's the right way to do things. It really isn't. I get it. There's a place for networking, especially when you're first starting out. But just trying to smoosh people doesn't really work. Sucking up to people in power, don't be that person. Everybody can see it and the people that you're sucking up to, they they know it too, right? You want to do things the right way. You want to get where you want to be based on the merit of what you work that you put in. Not because of, you know, how good you have the gift of gab and you're best friends with somebody. That's just not the way that you want to be projected. It all starts with you. And the biggest question is, are you going to take that first step toward making a positive change, right? We've all been in instances where you feel that you're just spinning your wheels and there's a certain way of doing things. And you might feel like, well, why should I branch out and try something new when this seems to be the way that I'm supposed to do? There's nothing that says that you have to continue on that track. You know, again, making a positive change, doing everything that you can do to make sure and make yourself a better official. Easier said than done. Again, don't tell me, but show me, right? A lot of people say that the best thing since sliced bread, just ask them, right? I've always thought that if you were truly big time, and this goes to everybody that I've become in contact with that are really, really good officials, great officials, they never pound their own chest. They they put the rubber to the road and they handle that by working the games and handling themselves in certain situations which other people just look at and can really tell, hey, they've really worked and honed their craft. The guys that just start pounding their own chest and saying, I'm big time, I'm big time, most of the time they're not. That's all just for show. Be the person that you want to work with, right? Again, you know, be the be the guy that you want to work with, right? Prepare, know the rules, the mechanics that pertain to your position, right? You can only control your part of what you're putting into the crew. But again, making that positive change, if you own up on your stuff first and make sure that you know what you're doing as far as the rules, as far as the mechanics to your position, right? You're shoring up your one part of that hole. And once you do that, now it's contagious, right? Because now somebody else is seeing how you're working and hopefully they pick up on it and now now they're getting better, right? Now you got two parts of that hole and then so on and so on. Honest accountability, right? Your calls and your no calls. I think everybody sees the film, own up to what you could have done better, right? Address it, learn from it and move on. Someone has to start the process of change, changing the culture and hopefully everybody will buy in. And this is very true. I can only speak of my local association that I don't think that we use enough video as far as my local association. A lot of the times, and again, this is my opinion, I think officials work games and soon as the game's over, they're high fiving and they go out, you know, for a pop and some wings and they put the game away and they never look at it again. And I really truly believe that in today's day and age with all the video and all the feedback that we can get, whether it's individually, introspectively, or from somebody else looking at our film, we need to take all the advantage that we can to get better because the film doesn't lie. Participate in pregame, but again, do what you say. I've worked with people where in the pregame, they're going to say they're going to do A, B, C, and D. And then we have that scenario out on the field, then poof, they disappear. They they said they were going to do something, but they didn't really do it when the time came out on the field. Take responsibility. It's not what the crew can do for you, but what can you do for the crew, right? Different mindset, no place for ego. It really takes a huge amount of effort to take responsibility for what you did or didn't do. It's always easier not to say anything and just move on and we'll just keep that under the rug. But I can bet you dollars to doughnuts that everybody else in the room knows what was done or what wasn't done. So it's better to just let that out, discuss it as a crew, learn from it and get better. You know, we all make mistakes. It's not like we're all going to be perfect. I wish we were. But that's just not going to happen. But what we can do is learn from our mistakes and build upon them so we don't make them again. And better yet, we can help somebody else not fall into that that hole, right? They learn from somebody else's mistakes. We just don't have enough time to make all the mistakes ourselves, so we have to learn from others. Again, another thing is own your position. Specifically, if you're an umpire, you need to own your position at umpire of what you're what you're supposed to do. What are your duties on that crew supposed to do, right? You're backing up the referee, you're making the referee look good, you're the first in line after the referee. And you have to understand what your role in that is of being a good umpire. But overall, being an official, you have to own your position. If you do your part and your partner does their part and your other partner does their part, you guys are all going to come together as a whole, and I can't stress that enough. I'm sure we've all worked on crews where you felt like you were working your butt off, but somebody else is just, you know, dragging their butt, right? And for whatever reason. And you just have to, you have to help pick them up and make sure that they move on. And especially if they are a regular part of your crew, find out what happened. And if that's unacceptable, you're like, hey, man, you got to pick this up. Because it's just not acceptable. You know, we have to put a superior product out there for the coaches, the players and the fans because they deserve that. Identify your weaknesses and work on them. Again, that's one of the hard things to do and I'll share with you. For me, what was very, very sobering aspect is sitting in a room of my peers' fellow umpires. And then up on the screen comes up a play, which I know right away, that's my play and I screwed the pooch on it. And now they say, okay, Roscoe, what were you thinking when when this happened? And then I have to say, well, I guess I wasn't, right? Admitting your faults, but also what could I have done better? So you learn from your mistakes, but okay, now what am I going to do going forward? You you pick those out and then you work on them so you don't have to go through that again. Earn the respect and the confidence of your peers every game. This is one of my own goals that I have going into each season with my crew specifically because not only do I want to earn the respect and confidence of my peers as my other fellow officials in the conference, but also since I'm working with the crew week in, week out, that's where I want to gain the most confidence and respect. And how are you going to do that, right? Well, that's, you know, coming prepared to pregame. Offering up a conversation when we have, you know, put up a play on the screen, hey, what's your take on this? And again, also, right or wrong, have a take. Because if you're wrong, you're going to get pointed out, be like, well, I see what you're saying, but you know what? Did you look at it this way or this is the way that we really want to do it? So it's going to get fixed. We really want to stay away from being a wallflower, right? It only works so long when you could just sit in the back of the room and, you know, nobody's going to call on me. I'm just going to, you know, sit here and take it all in. At some point, you're going to have to step up with positive information. What's going to help the crew? What's going to help you to be better and to get through this game and to move forward, right? Be humble. The game owes us nothing. Okay, this is very true and I try to stress this as much as I can. We are truly blessed to officiate this great, great game, to take the field on Thursday, Friday and Saturday during the season. We get the best seat in the house, but we're just there to administer the game. I think sometimes people think they're bigger than what they are. I think for the most part, people that are working in certain areas are truly blessed and fortunate. Not saying they didn't work hard because I think you need to work hard. Because when your opportunity comes, what keeps you in that room is your hard work, your work ethic and what kind of person you are. But again, trying to realize that the game doesn't owe us anything. And, you know, you hear it a lot like, ah, better than that person, why'd they get that game? And I should be on that game. And you know what? Be thankful for the games you get and be thankful for the games you don't get, okay? That's a true lesson that, you know, I've learned along my travels is, you know, just accept the games and because they're all big games. Like, of course, there are certain games that you like like to get, the crown jewel of your conference, of your association, that it's always nice to work, but you know what? I truly believe if you you keep your nose to the grindstone, it's going to come around. And truly, I think the cream always rises to the top. Now, again, you can't work every big game every year. It's just not going to happen. The numbers don't work that way, nor do I think you should. But if you keep preparing and working the games that you are given, you will get that opportunity more times than not. Never stop learning. The Lord gave us two ears and one mouth for a reason. We are always learning. Doesn't matter, you know, how long you've been doing this or whether it's 20 years or two years. I love talking with other officials, picking up on things, whether it's mechanically or a twist on a rule. I think you could never stop learning and you should never think like you know it all. Because I truly think that this game just keeps evolving where you have to keep moving forward. You have to keep working at it. You can't just rest on what you did last game, last month, last year, because we have to keep moving forward because the game keeps moving forward. Kind of just like what's going on now. We don't know what's going to happen this fall. Are we going to have football? Is it going to be truncated? Is it going to be pushed back? There's just so many questions right now and this is just so unprincipated and uncharted territory that it's just kind of weird taking this all in. But in the silver lining to this is there are now so many virtual meetings going on where officials are coming together and sharing knowledge, gaining knowledge, which is a great thing. I mean, I I literally have a video conference call every night of the week. And if it hadn't been for this pandemic, I don't think that would be the case. Not saying that I, you know, I'm glad that it happened, but I'm looking for the the good to what's been being presented to us. So I think as officials, especially with all of you that are on this right now, right? Taking a Wednesday evening away from your family and listen to this schlob, you know, talking about football. But and and I commend you guys for doing that. Never stop teaching. And again, the caveat to that is to those who are willing to listen. Be a sponge and absorb. Use what works for you and spread what you've learned. As you guys have attended different meetings, clinics, camps, academies, everything that everybody tells you may not work for you, right? But just be open to the fact that, okay, I'll try that and see if I can incorporate that. And if it works, that's great. You take it, you move on. If it doesn't, okay. Well, I see the point that, you know, maybe that mechanic, but you know what? It just doesn't work for me. And that's okay, but just keep an open mind and never stop learning and also teaching and giving back to other people in your local areas. Leadership is action, not position, right? This is true. Lead by example. Don't have the motto, do as I say, not as I do. Be the leader that people want to follow because they respect you, not because they fear you. I try to do that in my my daily life and in my professional life is, you know, I want people to follow me because I'm giving them the tools or the knowledge and I'm going to put them in the right place. Not because, well, he's my boss and I have to listen to him, okay? I mean, that works for some. That is a strategy. That's not one that I prescribe to just because I want to be led that way as well. It's kind of like, hey, if you really admire somebody, somebody in a higher position than you, let's say you're crew chief, right? I really think that you'd walk through a wall of fire for them if they asked you to, right? Now, if it's somebody that you could really care less for, you're like, well, hey, I'll work with a person, but you know, that guy's is not my cup of tea, right? And again, it's all about, you know, what you're putting out there. How are you interacting with other people? How are you projecting yourself and putting yourself in that those positions to interact with people in a positive manner? So when they leave, they say, hey, that that guy's, he's pretty good, you know? And again, that's just moving forward of, you know, putting the whole complete official. Crew official versus me official, right? Crew officials do what's best for the crew. A me official does what's best for themselves, okay? I'd rather work with a crew official rather than a me official any day of the week and twice on Sunday. Even if that crew official is a little less talented, because we can get them up to speed on other things. But again, if he's a me official, I don't really, I can't really depend on him or her in the heat of the battle because they're only looking out for themselves. Case in point, if somebody has an area of responsibility and they're they're in their area of responsibility, but they can go help out somebody else because they can expand their their vision, but they choose not to because, ooh, I'm going to just stay here because I'm not going to get in trouble because I was looking at my area and I'm good. You know what? I personally would rather work with somebody that's going to expand their vision and help out somebody when they're in need, right? Because at the end of the day, we're still, we still have to officiate the play. We have mechanics books of certain situations of where we're supposed to be looking, how we're supposed to covering certain plays. But you have to remember, at the end of the day, we all have to officiate the play that is presented to us. And again, if you're only thinking about yourself, I don't think that you're buying into the crew concept. Look out for one another, not just on the field, and this is more so right now, right? Which I know in my own local area and then outside of my local area, everybody's calling each other to see how each of us are doing and our families. That is so important because you build those relationships and those bonds more so off the field than on. And a lot of times that goes on the wayside just because we get busy on our own lives and we don't keep up that contact. But I really think in the current condition of what's going on in the country and the world, I think we have become more compassionate and caring about others and seeing how everybody's doing. Be proud of what you do, but don't be cocky. Again, like I said, don't, you know, don't think too much of yourself, okay? Because literally, there's a lot of people that can do what we do. We're just fortunate enough to be in the positions that we're in, okay? You have to remember that we're all giants at whatever level that we're working. Whether you're working freshman ball, JV or varsity, there's somebody behind you that would like to be in your position in your shoes, working at that level at that game. So I think we all have a duty to help out those seeking that knowledge, right? Help them further the stripes. Help them move up. I think that's very important because everybody's that is at a certain level didn't get there on their own. They were helped out in some fashion. So just continue doing that. I think that's very important as well. Enjoy every moment, every moment. Understand that it is a roller coaster ride. There's going to be highs and there's going to be lows. Unfortunately, I think there's more lows than highs, but we need to stay the course. As you guys know, that this avocation is just awesome. We love when football season rolls around, working with our friends, working on the field, smelling the grass. But understand that there are a lot of ebbs and flows. And I think it's very important to to be able to bounce that off of of certain people. So if you have a confidant, mentor, best friend, probably more so if it's somebody in our avocation because they understand what we go through, that it's very important that you have to have an even keel. But there are letdowns and there are some very high highs, right? But again, just trying to be level about it, learn from each experience and know that what a what a great game. And you know what? Raise the bar of officiating, okay? Whatever you do, raise it, make it better than before you got there. In whatever way that is, whether it's helping somebody out, whether it's promoting, you know, officiating. There's just so many ways to raise the bar. And again, it starts with you. You have to make that determination that you're going to make a positive change and you're going to change something for the better, right? Whether it's, okay, I'm going to study two chapters instead of one. I keep building on that. Or, you know, so many times, this to be good, it's not an August through December sport. It's year round, no matter what level you're at. To be really good and proficient at officiating, it's a year round endeavor. And it also helps when you have people to bounce things off of. So like your guys' group, you know, you guys have study sessions, bouncing stuff back and forth, helps each other get better. I think the days of just opening that book at the beginning of August are truly over. Unfortunately, do I think that there are still people that do that? Yes. But again, I think there are a lot more that are not doing that. So again, changing the culture of starting with yourself and then it spreads. And then, okay, you know, hey, it's the middle of February and I just had a couple of questions on, you know, rule seven. And, you know, what are you talking about? It's February. Why are you talking football? Well, you know what? I thought I was going to change it up this time, you know, just encourage some dialogue. Now, I'm not saying you go into five hour meetings every week, but I mean, it starts small and then it grows. You'd be surprised how many people would like to talk about football in February, about rules or going or breaking down film. I mean, there's more, there is a lot of people out there that really like to get into that. I'm one of them. So if you guys have any questions, please feel free. And again, I really appreciate you guys inviting me, sharing some time with you. And I really appreciate you guys taking time away from your families to be on this call tonight. So I appreciate it.
Roscoe, Mike Burton, your old supervisor saying, hey, great job. And guys, some great comments from Roscoe. He was always a class act for me. I was lucky enough to have him work for me at the Division Two and Division Three level and I'm so darn proud of him. But hey, great job, Roscoe and great job. I think one of the comments he makes is just don't be that guy as a supervisor. And I'll talk about this later when I'm on this presentation. But, you know, you've got to be that person that people want to work with and somebody that they don't want to work with. So Roscoe, you're looking good. Hey, thanks again for being on.
No, thank you. Dana, are you still on?
I'm still on.
Go ahead, your floor.
Hi, Roscoe, this is Dana Papas. I'm the Commissioner of Officials here in New Mexico. I just wanted to say thank you. That was outstanding. Such good material and applicable at every level. And I really appreciate you paying it forward to our officials here in New Mexico. That was a great presentation and everybody knows I'm a note taker and I was sitting here taking notes. I've got an interview at 6:30, so I was hoping that I was able to stay on. And I'm glad I did because that was that was wonderful and we appreciate you as a Pac-12 official, you know, taking time to give back to little old New Mexico. So thank you so much.
Well, I really appreciate that and I just consider myself a fellow official, not Pac-12 official. I'm just, again, very fortunate and lucky to, you know, get some opportunities. But again, I really appreciate you guys extending the invitation. So please, no, thank you.
Appreciate that. I didn't have anything else, Dennis.
Thank you, Dana. Does anybody have any questions for Roscoe?
Hey, Roscoe, this is Leonard. Hey, you talked about being a giant at the level that you officiate and people help you move up. Can you explain or mention some people that help you, helped you move up from, you know, when the time you started?
Well, okay. So locally, I have, when I started, I had a official, which by the name of Scott Tyfer, that was in the Mountain West at the time when I first started officiating here in Las Vegas. And so I had keen experiences with him as far as him teaching me, you know, stuff that was just on the cusp of what he was being taught. And so going, having that kind of experience and that tutelage that I wasn't privy to, nor was my local association. He brought that back not only to me, but then started disseminating that in our local area and our local group. So again, he helped me and taught me how to give back, getting those opportunities to, again, never forget where you came from and always give back. So, you know, there's just so many other people that I can name that have helped me throughout my career that it would it would take almost all night. But again, just getting those opportunities, but making yourself open to it. You might not think like, hey, this might not be a great learning experience, like, okay, this guy's talking to me. But, you know, there might be something where the light bulb goes off and you're like, oh, my goodness, I never thought of that. Or that's a that's a different take on it. I didn't, I didn't know about that. Or mechanically, hey, try this and then you try it and you're like, you know what? That works pretty well. I like that.
So I see that Luke. Luke works for nobody.com. Matt, do you have any, anything you'd like to say or ask Roscoe?
Yep, I think, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I'm kind of bouncing back and forth here between two different calls. But I just think one thing that I want to ask him, I've heard a lot of the don't be that guy. There's obviously many different examples out there of the don't be that guy principle. And we are probably all familiar with situations where we've been around somebody who has been that person. But I'm trying to put a positive spin on some of the officiating experiences that we've come to kind of know and love. Can you just maybe share one positive officiating experience, maybe? Not, it doesn't have to be at your Division One level, but even back in climbing that ladder? You'd want to share something with us? Yeah, you know, actually, I, because he's right here on this meeting, Mr. Burton. So when I was hired by him in '08, they had a policy of first year officials do not get postseason assignments. At the end of that year, we had a class of eight different officials from Las Vegas and Utah. And Mr. Burton decided to change that rule. And I believe most of us worked postseason assignments that year. And again, it's it's not a tooth of the horn. It's just the It's just the whole thing of our group was working so hard. And then to obviously be recognized for that, I think was just huge. And then it also, I looked at all the other officials that, you know, I was working with that received assignments that year from the Vegas and Utah area and just looked at the outstanding commitment that those officials have made. And literally it helped drive, drive me to be that much better because everybody was pushing each other to be better, to do what we needed to do to be on point. I think everybody wants to be nails on the field. But again, you may, may want to be a doctor, but if you don't go get a degree and go to medical school, you're not going to become a doc. So I think you have to put in that time and effort into becoming what you want to put on that field and what you want to. So hopefully that, that gives you a little answer to that question.
Yeah, yeah. We were having a discussion with some of our editors the other day about assembling crews. And it's, it's not as, as cut and dry as some people think. There's a lot of thought that goes into it. I'm sure Dana probably has a lot of experiences with that in her crafting of what she does. But I think everybody can be a clock person, especially on a football field. But I think there's just some areas that people seem to specialize in. And I think relying on your crew's strengths and relying on other strengths, because it's impossible to be an expert in every facet of this game. It's just impossible. But maybe if you could speak to some of that, obviously in your position as an umpire, you're going to be obviously hyper focused on some of the rules regarding linemen. But tell us maybe some of the things that you're aware of other crewmates and their strengths. Maybe in your past crew that you've had most recently or even years, years prior.
Okay, so one, I want to shore up everything that I need to as an umpire. So that's, you know, enforcements. That's offense and defensive line play. And, you know, obviously communicating and working well with the rest of the crew. Now, again, as to the point of other strengths, right? My current referee, the leadership that he provides of being that calming voice is off the charts. I worked with an official by the name of Matt Mills that is just a rules savant. Like I think I'm good at the rules, but he knows the nooks and crannies in and out. And like he really owns that, like owns it 100%. There's just different aspects of a crew makeup that make you make and come together and make you a crew. Again, you could put it on paper and you're saying, okay, here's crew A. But literally to the sense of being a crew, I think they have to work together, go through some pitfalls, learn from each other, learn their strengths and their weaknesses, and then work on them together. Because that's when you truly get formed and bond as a crew. I would like to think that we never have any, you know, explosions. But you know what? I think the crews that have, that step into a pothole, but come out the right side, learning from it. I think that's another crew bonding experience. Because at the end of the day, you don't want to go into the locker room pointing fingers at everybody else. You just want to figure out, hey, what went wrong? And how do we avoid it going forward and learning from it? I think to your point of staying positive, I think that is a true mark of a crew. And to your point of, you know, putting together crews, I think there's an aspect of the positive side of working with the same crew. You can nurture and develop what you have on that crew. Now, if you work with different officials every week, that's a challenge. But that's also, you get to have a diverse section of working with different people, different personalities. So that's also a plus. So I think there's pluses and minuses to both sides. I've only been privy in my local association that we work with crews. And the positive side of that is, is you can have somebody up and coming and work with them, mold them and, and create this official that, you know, is doing things in the right way. Now, with that being said, you have to have somebody that's willing to do that. Because if you're, if you're an up and comer and you're on a crew where everybody's, well, hey, I'm, I'm working every Friday night and that's all that matters. And, you know, I'm not letting anybody take my spot. Well, that's not going to help you. That's the negative side of working with the same crew because guys aren't willing to help somebody else. But again, I would like to think that everybody is trying to help each other get better.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's real fantastic. Yeah, I'm from Pennsylvania, so we've had a lot of discussions, obviously internally about crews and this and that. Now, not my call, but we don't use crews locally in the high school level. We kind of use quasi crews at the collegiate level in one or two of the conferences. But I think really, no matter if you're working with the same crew every week or different people every week, I think it's definitely important to have a, a strong, strong pregame going into a game. Whether it's between two teams that are nine and O or two teams that are maybe O and nine. It's vitally important, I think, to hammer down that pregame point.
No, definitely. I mean, that just helps your mindset of, you know, working that football game and really honing in on what is about to happen and what you're, you and the crew are about to do. Especially with the advent of how, how much video is available for the upcoming teams really helps you out. I'll be the first one to tell you that my video review helps me out because any level that I can get up on these amazing athletes, hey, I'm going to take it. So by me studying film and looking at their tendencies of what they usually do or what they might do, really helps me out tremendously. And so I think the pregame aspect of it is, is huge.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Good evening, sir. My name is Simon Moncadares. And first of all, thank you for taking time to speak to us. So I, I started officiating football about seven, eight years ago and I started in the umpire position. Have you worked different positions within your career, starting when you started in high school or the lower level, well up to collegiate, collegiate level?
So initially I was, I was an umpire starting out. And then I actually, when I just start, first started working community college, I was on the line of scrimmage the first year. And then the next three years I was a deep official, which I can tell you, at first it was all about like, well, hey, I'm not turning back games. I'm going to learn those positions. But it morphed into me understanding how to be a better umpire to help out those positions. And then also knowing those other positions, how those positions can help me as an umpire. So it actually broadened my mind of all the knowledge. And instead of just being one position and being just an umpire, right? Now I was okay on the line of scrimmage. Now I was deep. So that helped me out tremendously just to get into all those other positions. And not only mechanically, but also rules wise. Because if you're doing your position, you have to own your position, right? So you know those rules, what pertains to what, what's going on at your position. Well, now I was an umpire first. Now I'm on the line of scrimmage. Now I'm deep. So now that just, it paid me back tenfold.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Kenny did here. Last night Frank talked about communication from players that tend to whine to him, you know, to take him out of his routine or out of his game. How do you deal with players that are constantly coming up to you and complaining?
Uh, I, well, first I want to make sure that they have a valid point. If they're just whining, you know, I'll say, hey, I'll ask them and say, what is, what is the opponent doing? And then number one, I'll say, hey, what number? Because usually he'll just say, hey, that guy or the guy over me. I'll say, what number was it? And then, you know, trying to get him to tell me what he was doing. Like, so if you, if I have a nose tackle that's saying, hey, this guy's holding, the center's holding me. I'll say, all right, I'm going to take a look, right? And then so for, which I'm not, not looking, right? But you know what? I'm going to pay a little bit more attention. And for two plays, I'll tell them, hey, that play, I didn't see any restriction. You know, it looked like you beat him off the line, you shot the gap, right? And then just letting him know that, hey, I am working for him. If he mentions something, hey, I'm going to work with him. I'm not going to dismiss him. But if he's just whining to whine, that's when I have to actually look and say, hey, what's going on? Aren't you an All-American? This guy shouldn't be beating you like that. You know, just try to get them back into the game. And again, not dismissing them because they, they might have a legitimate right, you know? But I'm going to let them know what I saw on, you know, a player or two, just so he knows that I was watching distinctively what they were doing specifically against him.
I love that comment. Aren't you an All-American? Question mark. That's great. Hey, Roscoe, real quick, what's your pre snap routine?
Well, I start out with the dead ball officiating because I, I never say, okay, get the ball down. So, you know, dead ball officiate, you know, whether I spot it or the center judge spots it. Now we spot the ball. Now I'm looking for any subs for substitution mechanics. Then I'm counting offense and I try to get that count as soon as I can. And then I'm back in my position and then, you know, looking at my area of responsibility. One of the things that I try to do, because it's happened, when you lose focus and you try to know what your keys did, the pass play. But I've tried to do that for the whole game and I don't think I've gotten past six in a row where it breaks up, whether I have to go break up a brush fire or something like that. And then I have to start it all over again. But that helps me get back into my focus because sometimes if you got a real lopsided game, whatever reason, you know, your mind starts to wander or it's super hot or super cold or super wet, you know? Just to get me back into my focus, I try to really focus on my keys and know what they did on the last play. But then every play. And like I said, I think I'm only up to six in a row. So it's a work in progress.
Hey, Roscoe, Todd Morris.
How you doing, sir?
Hey, good, brother. Hey, I'm, I want to know about what is, what makes a good pregame for you? As, as a white hat in, in high school, I just kind of want to know what, what your take is on it.
Uh, for me, I think it's getting the whole crew on the same page as far as, okay, what we have going on, what's in front of us, who's playing? And are you asking specifically, uh, working with the high school crew? Just because I know the, the dynamics are a little bit different. It's not like you have a film review the day before or anything like that. So specifically, are you asking like for a high school setting?
Either side, you know? Because I'm just trying, I'm developmental in the collegiate ranks and still learning that. And I'm just wanting to know, and I've sat through some collegiate pregames. I was just wondering what, what works for you in a pregame? And what do you feel is the most important information that you get?
I, I think for me, it's videos number one. So I think whether you could do it during the week. But again, it starts individually. So I need to get, see plenty of video. And then I have to see what their tendencies are and what, and you know, mark out like disruptors. You know, their stud players, things like that, because that's going to help me. And then also in relationship to other positions on the field. So if they have a stud wide receiver, you know, I'm, I'm talking with the deep officials about, hey, number two is just a stud. And now that encourages that dialogue because hopefully they were watching film too. So now we're talking back and forth about a certain play or, man, that dude's just crazy. He's, he's got some hops and he's, you got some afterburners, right? And, you know, different things like that. And then to get more specific, like on PATs or field goal tries. And let's say on defense, they have a tendency for a pull and shoot. You know, we addressed that, we noticed that in film, but it wasn't big enough for, you know, to rise to a level of a foul. I'm going to have that discussion with the side judge, just saying, hey, look at this tendency here. It, it's right on the borderline and that looks, you know, almost like a foul or depending on your conference's philosophy, okay, hey, they got the pole, but there was no shooter. So if they shoot, we're going to have a foul for this. Picking out those specific instances of where we're all on the same page. Just like if we have a swinging gate. Hey, we can talk about it as a crew. What are we going to do if they go into a swinging gate? Where's everybody going to be at? We don't want to be caught by surprise because when we get caught by surprise, that's when breakdowns usually happen.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Corey Norman here. How are you tonight?
I am doing well.
So just to piggyback on that last conversation, I'm a fellow white hat as well. I know with referee and umpires got to be on the same shit of music every game. Has there ever been a time, it's a silly story, that you had to save your white hat?
Uh, save my white hat?
From further embarrassment? Or had to help him out with a rule or judgment where?
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you an instant. I didn't save him, but it's more so his trust in me and the rest of the crew. So we had a game where the quarterback drops back. He gets hit, but he's being rushed. So my referee's attention was on, you know, possible RPS roughing the passer. And the ball comes out and now it's in my pan of view of, I'm not looking at the quarterback, but he's in my, my field of vision, right in the center of my keys. And the ball comes out and now it's picked up or recovered by the defense. He comes up and all I say to him, I don't tell him, hey, we have empty hand. I say, I have a loose ball. If you have an empty hand, I have a loose ball recovered by the defense. The line judge comes in and, and hears me say that and he says, yeah, I agree. The referee turns around and announces the ruling on the play is a fumble. Previous play is under further review. And it comes back, it was confirmed, it was empty hand. He was actually focused on the defensive player for roughing the passer. Didn't see that it was an empty hand. I could offer up information. I wasn't telling him what it was, but I offered up the information, me and the line judge. And he actually went with us. And then afterward, he said, you know, you really saved me and that was all about trust because I trust you guys. And so, I mean, that, that, that really felt good that, you know, it wasn't my position. Yet, you know, he felt comfortable enough with me and what information that I gave to him, that he was going to go on the line and say, hey, the ruling on the field is a fumble. Because to everybody else in the stadium on TV, he was ruling fumble. When in actuality, it was a crew thing and we got it right. But, you know, I thought that that was a true testament of the crew thing, right? And his trust in his fellow officials. And you know what? As luck would have it, we didn't let them down. So I thought that was a good.
Story. Thank you, Roscoe.
Yeah, thanks, Roscoe. And I think you touched on, on quite a few important topics. Change of culture, you know, improve, don't be last year's official. Areas of responsibility. And so I know in, in high school, in the umpire position, especially five man crew or even four man crew, when it's on a goal line play, you know, the mechanic for the umpire is the, the line of scrimmage has goal lined all day long. You don't rule if that's a touchdown or not a touchdown. But I think part of your, your message is if that umpire has information to help out the covering official, we need to listen to, to that information to, to get the, the call correct.
Well, I still use that same mechanic in my current position. And then, and as well as whatever level. So obviously I'm not going to rule touchdown, not touchdown. But what I go in pregame with the wing officials is, okay, if we have a loose ball at the goal line pileup, right? If I have the ball in the end zone, because I'm. goal line pileup, right? If I have the ball in the end zone, because I'm going to dig for the ball and find out where it's at. If I have the ball in the end zone, all I'm going to say is, I've got the ball, I've got the ball. Because if they don't know what they have, they're going to be crashing in, right? And they have to find the ball. I'm going to find the ball, pin it down. And all I'm doing is yelling to them, I've got the ball. That's my signal phrase. I'm not tipping my hat, not grabbing my, my jersey, none of that. All I'm saying is, I have the ball. And that's for them to know, okay, Roscoe has the ball in the end zone. Now, that's not to say they have, let's say, double action with a knee down, and then he's in the end zone. So they're going to mark him short. But if they don't know, I say, I have the ball, I've got the ball, I've got the ball. So they crash in, they hear me saying that. And nine times out of 10, if they're doing that, and then they go up a touchdown.
Right. And that's my point. Does any information that you have to offer up could be vital?
Well, and imperative, like, I guess I could be a me guy. And I just, I don't know. Hey, you get a check, what do you think? Is it a touchdown? And again, that's not what you want to do. You want to, you want to help out the crew. All right. You want to be that person that people can rely on and depend on to be there in those tight situations, where they can actively depend on you and know that you have their back, but also they have yours as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's the message I got from, from that segment of your presentation.
Well, thank you.
Nobody else have any more questions? You know, we're about, about five minutes left, but it's your last chance. Leonard?
Yes, sir. Hey, appreciate it, Roscoe. Thank you for taking now your time this evening to show your presentation and answer questions. Really appreciate it. And I appreciate everybody showing up tonight. If you guys want to listen to Roscoe some more, check out Rules 11 podcast. Roscoe's got a segment on that. It's really good. A lot of information in there. But once again, Roscoe, appreciate it, man. You're the best.
No, again, I think you guys, and seriously, I really appreciate the, you know, reaching out and the invitation. So, and again, I applaud all of your efforts of, you know, raising the bar of officiating. So please, thank you.
Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate you. Have a good evening. Stay well.
What was the name of that podcast again?
Rules 11.
Yeah, it's good, folks. Yeah, if you're not listening to podcasts, that's a good one to listen to.
They talk about a lot of NCAA rules, but a lot of philosophy. And you'll learn something every night listening to that, that podcast. And so tomorrow, we have, what's tomorrow, Thursday? Yeah, Mike controls from our Mac, 6:00 PM. Friday will be 5:00 PM. Who do you have Friday? I don't have my list in front of me.
Mike Piera, NFL, on Fox.
Saturday, 10:00 AM, Brad Rogers, NFL White Hat. And then next Thursday, Mike Burton, who's on this call, I don't know if he's still on or not, but he's National Director of Football Officials for our Division Two. He was also on the podcast, Rules 11, a couple weeks ago. So listen to him if you get a chance. And thanks for joining. We'll talk to you guys tomorrow. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.